The being our call for seven two thousand nineteen at seven forty-nine P M. I call this town meeting to order. I will entertain a motion to admit. Ms. Menegale.
Mr. Moderator, I move to admit the following persons to this town meeting. Darren Klein, Martin Murray-Doerry, Janet Murphy, Matthew Cooper, Scott Thornton, Steve Letterman, Allison Payne, Harold Miller, Robert Carone, Jason Smith, Phil Gilly, Debbie Carone, Mary Ann McNatty, Martin Stevens, Mark Hamel, Susan McAdner, Alan O'Reilly, Mark Clark, Mike Murphy, Cheryl Keller, John Cliffell, Danielle McKnight, Patrick Bowers, John Bernard, Brady Galant, Henry Davis, Kelmars, John O'Keefe, Linda Batcheller, Krista Batcheller, David Fardarchuk, Zuyang Zhang, Michelle Morello-Griswold, Kathy Laco, and Gerald Austin.
I have a motion to adjourn. Seeing now all favorably say aye. The poll unanimous. While they are on their way in and before we do the pledge, I would just close some business. So first of all, if you're seeking recognition, please stand, go to the microphones. If you can't get to the microphone, raise your hand. And we have three wonderful students here who will bring a micro-- or four, I'm sorry, who'll bring a microphone to you. Mia Ted, Stuart Garnas, Sam Wunta, and Zach Stacks. Thank you all very much. In the event, we need to take a hand count. Counting the front and my left, Sean Delaney. Thank you, Sean. Counting the center section, Lori Capazudo. And counting to my right, Ed McGrath. Please turn off these things so as not to interrupt the meeting. Everybody should be wearing a red badge. You need to be seated. That's part of the fire code, so please find a seat there are available seats. There are visitors to the media center that are not affiliated with the boards and committees. And they should all be wearing black badges. So if you're in the media center wearing a red badge, please come to the main hall. Otherwise, you won't be going. A couple of other rules. Again, you must be recognized by me before seating. Do not shuffle from your seat. Those standing in the back that are seats available, so please find a seat. If you have a seat next to you, maybe you could raise your hand so they know that they can find you. Thank you. I started to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. I didn't do that, but I didn't think it was a big deal. Ms. Menegale, would you like us to simply introduce today's...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible,天地一體, without any doubt.
At this time, I'd like to do a long sentence for two town employees recently cast away. Martin Fair, who thirty-- was thirty, but living in more than thirty years as the quarter health director and Ruth White, planning administrator. A motion to dispass the reading of the law.
If you can to refer to the articles by number, refer to the sentences of the reading of the recommended services by the law.
Here for voting, discussing, seeing now all favorably say aye. The polls unanimous. Article one.
Here now on reports of town officers and committees, and here reports of town officers and committees has made present at this meeting.
Hi there, reports of town committees. Ms. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, I'm trying to make a present here of the Economic Development Committee. Now that Polte property is well on its way, I think it has its third building going up and the fourth foundation.
(Inaudible).
Don't get that off. Is that any better?
Yes.
I'm here on behalf of the Economic Development Committee. Now that Polte owned properties, and I think their third building is almost complete and the fourth foundation is going with around. Economic Development Committee is taking a look at what other things to be done and should be done. And we felt what was lacking and what was necessary was to bring together our business owners and commercial property owners to see basically how we can help them. So we have a business forum that's scheduled for Thursday, October the twenty-fourth at Kitty's. We're going to discuss several different things, but we want to give them an update on where the town stands in terms of a water source and what's going on, and the update on wastewater, which we hope to get into town, I guess, anywhere from about six to ten years. But it's something on the horizon. In addition to that, we want to discuss with them zoning and permitting and how we can expedite permitting, and also to discuss whole host of things that we as an Economic Development Committee think are important, such as taxing incentives. We've met with the state, and the state has informed us that it's pretty much wide open. So for any business owner that may be in the audience tonight or a commercial property owner, we hope you will come in and attend and hear from us, but most importantly, we would like to hear from you. Thank you. It's nice to see town meetings so well attended.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everybody hear me? So just a couple of recognitions that we wanted to call out this evening while we're here together. The superintendent of schools, John Bernard, has informed the school committee of his intention to retire at the end of the year. We thank him for his service. Longtime Conservation Commission member Martin Weiss has also announced he's stepping down from the commission. He has nearly thirty years of experience and dedicated service, so we thank him for his And finally, to Joseph Fode, select board member and also finance committee member, until the end of this past fiscal year, we thank him for his service. Mr. Moderator, through you, I wish to provide the body an update regarding an important discussion that's going on in the community regarding the Twenty Elm Street project. There's an article later on where there'll be discussion of a transfer of funding, Article seven, for the fiscal year 2020 budget. That discussion is likely to be limited to the merits of the transfer itself, but it goes into a lot of conversations over the length of offer of the town meeting in the community as well. The zoning board of appeals invocation of State Department on August twenty-second was based on a report that reflected good faith efforts by staff in the planning and engineering departments, a report that's been posted online for weeks. While we are disappointed that the State Department of Housing and Community Development elected not to conduct the independent evaluation required by the department's own regulations, that they failed to explain how a developer gained access to confidential group home locations, and that they did not investigate the potential that there are additional safety home units here in North Reading that are not reflected in the subsidized housing inventory. This determination is not unexpected and is consistent with every other determination that the H C D has made, denying the community's assertion of safe harbor based on the general land area minimum. Staff in multiple departments have continued to pull over property records over the past few weeks to ensure that every last acre is accounted for in our calculation of land use for affordable housing in North Reading. We will provide an update to the zoning board of appeals for its consideration this Thursday evening. North Reading has had a proud history of working with developers in the interest of site and affordable housing in the right spot with the right density in the right buildings. We have not turned our back on this need, on those in need, and we look forward to the opportunity for the zoning board of appeals to potentially present this fact on a full record, if it so chooses, to the State Housing Appeals Committee, and if necessary, beyond. That said, there is a legal process under the H C D regulations. We'll respect that process, and I'm unable to comment further at this time.
Any other boards or committees seeking recognition under this article? Here, now, as a board of the second commission making recognition. For the Finance Committee, Mr. Delaney.
No, each and all.
Any further discussion? Seeing now all favorably say aye. The polls unanimous. Article two. Ms. Delaney.
Prior year bills. I move to approve payment of a prior year bill in the amount of six thousand five thirty-eight eighteen to be paid for November twenty twenty E P W expenses or D P W related expenses.
I have the motion. Recognition for the second.
You recommend.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Delaney. Any discussion? Just quite as a whole, this, all those favorably say aye. The polls unanimous. Article three. A motion, please.
Transfer funds to the capital improvement stabilization fund. I move to transfer free cash of some of two hundred thousand to be added to capital improvement stabilization fund established by October first two thousand seven meeting of town meeting, and S S five by three, and this printed in the board.
Everybody, as a board of the second, Ms. Delaney.
You recommend.
So.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing now all favorably say aye. The polls unanimous. Article four, Ms. Delaney.
Article four, appropriate money for stabilization fund. I move to pass Article four in the board.
Recognition for the second, Ms. Delaney. The Select Board recommends. Finance Committee, Mr. Delaney.
Finance Committee recommends passing over the caveat that at the moment our stabilization fund for the town is made at five percent of the net revenue. This has been the same amount for a number of years, and we're slowly just adding that amount. However, it's a little longer in the crisis of what we've got. So it is our intention this winter to examine whether or not this is an aggregate amount or basically what we gave them, and to report back to the town meeting, as well as the financial lighting committee of the board of selectmen, with the recommendation we be seeing that amount.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing now all favorably say aye. The polls unanimous. Article five.
Article five, transfer of funds to the government of the point of development of the life of the majority of us. I move to pass Article five and this printed in the board.
Recognition for the second, Ms. Delaney.
The Select Board recommends.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Delaney.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing now all favorably say aye. The polls unanimous. Article six, Ms. Delaney.
Article six, appropriate money for participating in funding and arranging fund. I move to transfer free cash of three hundred one thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars fifty-two cents to be added to participating in funding and arranging fund, all of that's expressed by Article six and this printed in the board.
Recognition for the second, Ms. Delaney.
The Select Board recommends.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Delaney.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing now all favorably say aye. The polls unanimous. Article seven, let's go there. Further discussion? Before you make a decision, I'd just like to, on this particular article, this is not about the project. This is about funding town council expenses. So we don't want to sit in a debate about projects.
We're not going to get into the trade cards or the earths and the argument of specifics of the project itself, or the goals, or the way to assess the building or how we should do it, or any additional factors, so that it just all in perhaps position to the legal and legal process.
I agree with you. I just, it's not stated in the rules. And that's not for you. Motion, this is...
First of all, thank you for that. This is refreshing to see so many people willing to participate. This is where your voices are, this is where what these fellow agents are prepared to spend. So thank you for participating. I hope you find this a enjoyable experience to say that. Join us moving forward to it. But that makes sense. This is why I moved to amend this to the year twenty twenty operating budget. Order number five fifteen, June tenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting is paused. Transfer of free cash of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, nine seven town councils specified out, this printed in the board.
Recognition for the second, Ms. Delaney.
The Select Board recommends.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Delaney.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Just a little bit of a general information. What we have is back in July, the company has referred that application filed with the town, and within that application filing, there's a whole set of series of time lines that need to be met by the zoning board of appeals, and then the S S process of calls through a more time line that have to be met. So the tech, by July, the company has referred that application was filed, probably the eighth of August, zoning board of appeals, the building is already, the company has referred it, the meeting will appear, and declared, on behalf of the town, this information provided by the administration, that we had met the ten percent requirement for housing that's a little to one point five percent. The land, which is the general land area minimum, which is required to claim safe harbor. So the appeals ordered so, they notify the developer that the developer that had opportunity can either accept that or appeal. The developer has appealed, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the governing authority of the state level for affordable housing applications. So they made the necessary appeals as a Friday, as a Friday, as you were aware, we were notified by the state by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and that they did not believe that we met the threshold, either with the ten percent or with the three units, or with the one point five percent, and we leave general land area minimum, uh, delay. So now, as we see them before you today, a few weeks ago, the Select Board determined that all this was, we didn't know when the application was coming in at the time, we were just operating budget, just June, we had some money, over the time, we did not have, we had some further application. In order for the zoning board of appeals administration to properly address this application in her, so we get that we have, we're requiring additional funding, decided to request additional one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to supplement town council budget specifically for the application, the process. It was called the Friday's determination, the no creation determination, and the town is favored. Zoning board of appeals deserves that it's going to have a legitimate determination in their own, it's going to have, in order to accept the H C D's determination that we didn't have safe harbor, and then move forward with the application process and negotiating with the developer, or they're going to have to decide to appeal. The administration can have, it's confident, we have given appropriate information to support, the safe harbor determination, and we will advise the zoning board as such. And a determination, again, maybe this is a zoning board of appeals, so Thursday, they'll wait their options, and my guess is that they probably vote to appeal the determination. And if doing so, then it turns a whole lot of things around that. So twenty days to appeal, and then whoever, the Housing Appeals Committee, and the state level, which will adjudicate, right, the H C D, the ready, Melora, will start the process. That process in itself would take a year and a half to two years for a legitimate determination by housing, we get to win. But doing so, it would require legal assistance, require some additional consulting assistance, and that's why we do this. So what's that process in its place? Obviously, something's not going to be happening. The housing community will make a determination, it's very important to town, safe harbor is properly voted on, adjudicated, the developer has a right to appeal. The zoning board of appeals determines that the town still does not reach the safe harbor thresholds, the town has a right to appeal. And then eventually, the back to town, any award goes forward. We're talking about a lot of processes. So what is something you can be able to say, whether or not you want appropriate one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars specifically for funding, child to be, I just put it in the judgment, obviously, the money, the Select Board will have to make a determination, how we go about funding the necessary dollars to move forward, if the zoning board of appeals decides to do so. Does this work for you yet, Mr. Delaney? Again, the district, the district, although we're disappointed with the determination on the Department of Housing and Community Development, we're not surprised. The track record is generally, first overall, not to support the safe harbor declaration of the community, unless it's the Department of Housing and Community. So this is not a surprise. It's disappointing, not as many, not as time, it's not a time for many, but that's the process that we're dealing with. So over there, just a moderator, we're asking for one hundred and three hundred thousand dollars, we're looking to, just for this, a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone seeking recognition? You guys have a call on microphone, one on the right. Mr. Yor.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Good. Jeff Yor, four twenty-seven Park Street. Just to make sure that they understand, we're going to ask for one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, but Thursday is at the date that you said that the zoning board of appeals would decide whether to go forward or not. So that is our next big meeting.
And this is next meeting, the zoning board of appeals, in terms of whether a legal position, subject position.
And that meeting will be held, the zoning board of appeals meeting will be held where?
Right in the... Do you really know how to get it?
Yep. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Ma'am.
Yes, Mr. O'Leary, uh, question. You've mentioned several times the town's position. Could you clarify a little bit what successfully defeating the 40B qualification? I mean, what's the end game here? So we're going to, if the town likely votes to approve this transfer, you've mentioned that it could set off a potentially long and protracted, expensive process. What's the end look like? What are we, what's the end goal of these funds?
The end goal is to get the next, the zoning board of appeals, they can make formal decisions in relation to the application. The first thing we're going to argue about is, do we meet these state power thresholds? That's the first determination needs to be clarified. And if we can clarify, state will attempt to clarify, they get what's happened, they look forward. So, that's why it's going to be a longer process. So if they take the state, probably you're going to have to two years to make that determination. That's the first, I think it's, only since the developer on the other side, you have to determine, you know, it's his best interest to, you know, just to take the project or not. It's a long drawn out process, I have money, that's his determination. We get a different position, we're going to react, this application, we didn't ask for, we didn't look for, we didn't endorse it, and we did, we did strictly reaction. So, as far as the end game, it's a long way down the road, depending upon, you know, they may be denouncing it, we do it now, who knows? But, all we know is the process is, what it's going to take, it's through that process, time wise and money wise, it's a long way to go.
And should the town ultimately be successful, however many years that takes, would this developer and the other developer have the opportunity to come before the zoning board of appeals and go through the local zoning process?
If the town is successful in improving its point, we met, we've got all of those thresholds. If the town has not accepted the application or avoiding, avoiding the process, as opposed to having to successfully accept it.
Thank you.
The town, the state, if we meet these thresholds, we've met the thresholds, and if the state is not to say, you know, we're not just going to, without our assets, we can commit. But the other part of what you recognize is that, uh, the town, in assistance with the planning commission, or select, uh, select board, administration, we put together a full housing plan. Last office submitted it to the state, it wasn't even tried, they're going to have an application on that, on a plan here. And the state doesn't recognize the fact that we have a plan in place, and they're not allowing us to execute it. So, because we don't have the 10%, all of the one. So, so as the zoning board of appeals, as the zoning board of appeals has been there this year, uh, over the past several years, actively evolved, every 20 B and A pages in place the last 20 years here, we have never turned down one. We improved every single one. But we, we bother the local housing, the right place, the right size, the right density, with the right developers. So, we have good track record, we have our obligations, we just have a threshold yet to state, to state that, so that's what we're trying to do right now.
In the unlikely event that the funds aren't spent, do they return to free cash?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if I could just give you a hand, just to record.
Yes, my name is Wendy Emerson, and I live at 100 Lowell Road.
Wendy Emerson, I'm sorry, you guys?
100 Lowell Road.
All right, thank you. Ma'am.
Jahan Nakosha, 2 Poplar Terrace. Um, a couple of questions. One, if the 40B, um, process is not allowed for this person to develop that property, then is it true that they could still develop apartments there under the current zoning, and that it just would not include the affordable, um, part of it? That's one, question one. I'll give you the second, just so you, actually, you can, for easier for you. On, um, this is 125,000 dollars on an operating budget, which means that that is to be expended during FY 2020. And you're talking about a process that could take up to two years. Is 125,000 dollars only to carry the legal expenses expected from now until June 30th? And then, do you expect to come back for more, um, at the April or May town meeting, to then fund what might be needed next year?
We anticipate that 125,000 dollars is the right amount, just based on, uh, Congress's advice, just to cover food and eating. We took it through the whole process. Absolutely right, as far as, this will be here. 125,000 dollars takes June 30th, that'll give us more than enough to cover what needs to be done right now. But the balance, again, will be turned back into free cash, and my anticipation is that we would ask for, to the town meeting, to come up with the delta, with the difference of what was spent. We anticipate it's going to be needed before, in the next week.
So is there any estimate as to, if this is going to be a two-year process, of what type of costs we're talking about? I mean, we're being asked in a few articles to vote on the high school to continue legal fees that have now, are up near a million dollars so far with no resolve. How much do we think this is going to cost the taxpayer?
We believe this is going to cost 125,000 dollars. This is the only thing that's already available, because they've got savings, and how it's supposed to raise appropriately, so it's not going to affect the tax rate at all. And again, we anticipate, you know, we spent 50,000 dollars of 2023, 1,750 to turn free cash, re-appropriated into moving into the next disney, so we're not going to let it get ahead of ourselves. We also don't want to kind of assume that everything are, uh, quickly the process is just over.
Okay, back to my first question about.
And the first question is, you know, under the current zoning, it is by right, the owner of the property plan, our opportunity to develop it, it's going to be 10, okay, 9, 10, 9, 6, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1.
How many?
Nine.
Oh, nine, and, instead of 120?
Instead of 200.
Instead of 200, okay. All right, thank you.
So by right, under the current zoning, 9, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1.
Mr. Moderator, I think 20 Riverside Drive, I move the question. Move to the. So we have a, on the move to the question. All in favor of the move to the question? Say aye. Both unanimous, Mr. O'Leary, have a moment.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator. Okay, just as a matter of engagement, 125,000 dollars, so, uh, it's going to take us June 30th, again, we're going to be, uh, it's just a linear basis, to carry on, across the simple, on the June, I just make a little bit of my, just a little while. If it should add, I just urge everybody here, just to come out for the rest of the evening, and for a couple of reasons. Two reasons, one, we don't really need a lead, and the motion to, to revisit it, we're not, we can revisit it again, we don't want to add to that. We also have, uh, some important business we should take along, which is a bit to do with another section immunity, as well as special accounts for other legal fees that we can afford, so we want your input, we want your support. So, thank you for having our, and that will just make, we hope to support.
We have a motion on the floor now, all in favor of the main motion to appropriate 125,000 dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Both unanimous. Can I do it here now?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Article eight, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article eight, it's printed in the wire.
Recognition from the second floor. The floor, you can answer. Recommend the title. Finance Committee, so.
Finance Committee, you have a good title.
Discuss. The unanimous, please say aye.
Aye.
Both unanimous. Article nine, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator. Ed McGrath, 8 Laurel Road, would like to make a motion to reconsider Article seven.
Mr. Moderator. We, we have a motion to reconsider. So, let me just explain. If you vote yes, then it can come back on the floor. If you vote no, it does not come back on the floor, and it cannot come up again the rest of the night. So, if, if everybody leaves, in the next hour, and someone moves reconsideration then, and it comes on the floor, whoever's left can vote. So, what I heard was, you all want to vote no, on reconsideration. So that kills it, means it's passed, and it can't come up again. Motion on the floor is to reconsider Article seven. If you say yes, it will come back on the floor for more debate. All in favor of reconsideration of Article seven, please say yes.
Yes.
All in both.
No.
Both say aye. Article nine, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the free cash, some of 250,000 dollars, for negotiation, mediation, any other litigation, with PMA consultants, LLC, door, meeting, architect, and any other four major entities, considering the second is totally required, with all costs, except for the liability due. All this process aside, not in the light of the law.
Recognition from the second floor, Mr. O'Leary.
Select Board, you can answer.
For the Finance Committee, so.
Finance Committee, you have a good recommendation.
Who can be, no? Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, you can just look over my shoulder here, just as a general of all litigation. And as you know, the VHS, I have a feeling, the citizens of the state, are fully executive session issue, and will prejudice town's interest in discussing these issues in the primary, including the county. Regarding this, as the second board filed deal action against PMA consultants and door review of all of town's equity. There are no PMA consultants, or all product managers, and a door review of the architect's, uh, with the fire to split it over right now. These files are reserved to continue these deal actions. Mediation was settled September, for the road resolution was reached. Trial is currently suspended, April 21st, it's not going to be April. So, the support of this is in the, over there. If the town will provide additional funding, we need to deliver to the second initial project. Town has authorized approximately, uh, 1,140,000 dollars today, and approximately 220,700 dollars remaining, like you said, to city of the season. Now, a couple of votes to, uh, appropriate an additional 250,000 dollars for free cash, to continue legal action, break the gates, through trial, based on the current standard of projections. And this is, break this new trial. It's important to note that the appropriation is, uh, higher than anticipated originally, because there was a couple of, uh, counter claims, and, uh, what's, you know, just movement from federal law to state law, uh, which allows additional, so again, to, uh, litigate, and, uh, there's also a counter claim against the town, by project editor, who we had to talk to, who not necessarily anticipated that, and we adjudicated all of this. So as we move forward, the good news is we have trial. And the good news is that we have a couple of things, anything before the court, we're anticipating some rejudication potential, perhaps. If any laws happen to go our way, necessarily we're going to ask just maybe for a trial, to see what happens. We are anticipating that we're going to trial. We are anticipating that we need to ensure that we have adequate representation, adequate, uh, consultants, different fields to assist our case. It's important to note, should the town pay, our tracks all for, on multiple, that we would reverse for our legal expenses and conditions to make. So we are moving forward, moving finally moving forward, a little more after eight, because we have a table. And we look for, for support, the later to reconsider the closure.
Further discussion.
I'm a homeowner from 291 Campbell Street, I've been a member of the SFC for eight years. Um, I, I have to say, I think this is probably good money chasing back. 250,000 dollars is a lot of money, if I have a box or a vehicle, or a stock, I still need it, a camera. Um, and I just think the probability of actually procuring money out of this is extremely, uh, no, all the specific statements, or the executive session, and can be discussed, or I understand that. But I, I just think the probability of success is really quite overwhelming. And I'll be moving against this position, my friend.
Further discussion. Mr. O'Leary.
I think it's important to note that throughout this process of 2015, actually, for the, uh, the fourth, second time, we go, wait this decision, heavily, whether or not we want to engage in litigation. And whether it was worth, you know, uh, you said before you would ask for, uh, 177,000 dollars, and had to back it up to another 15 million dollars, in order to complete this, this project. What, what happened was, we would not have an opportunity to get a practice in a lot of different areas, to make informed decisions, based upon the contracts and these two parts. So, whether we decided to spend 122 million dollars, we did spend 122 million dollars. We spent 122 million dollars in order to, uh, complete a project that was less than what we thought we would get for 100, so. It was 35 million dollars to add to this project, before we came back, we could be additionally, definitely, we'll be moving ahead today. The board of the town, thinking this is not the second or third rule of the committee. That's why we make a very clear, the second or third rule of the committee was not hard to consider, making progress. They chose us, we need this project, we get it done. And they did it effectively, they did it effectively, we have a turn right now. We did not completely get hired, we didn't last. What if, like, we had a determination, came to town, we, we came to town, we did, and updated it with the best we could, the best we can, in order to facilitate, uh, our legal threats in our watch, in relation to our suit against these two parties, responsible parties, not giving us the opportunity to make decisions on our own, all we really wanted to have, you know, for a project. We would not have, so we, this, we would not have continued, just to expect, appropriate, or 1 million dollars. Through this process, we didn't believe we had a strong case, and it would have started getting right. So, we're at the junction now, you know, we could, 1.140, you know, probably 120,000 dollars left. And we need 250,000 dollars to bring this thing to closure, if the trial goes on as soon as we can. And then, so, you know, well, if you start with, uh, people who would serve, and a lot of money is spent, and it will continue to be spent, because this is the end, this is, this is the end, because I can tell you right now, that the select board, the question is turning at the time. at the time. This is the end, and we're going to show this as a simple trial. So we need to bring the closure, we made the best, we made, with the support, with the time we need to support, with the time we need to go on the appropriations, what did we do along the way? So now we're at this certain juncture, we need to bring the closure, and it's just a little bit, probably going to be. So, if you appreciate, more than I have any questions now, and I may answer by hand.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Schultz? I just want to add that Mr. O'Leary, time is, um, well, Mr. O'Leary, myself, this is all part of the full mediation bottom, this is never, we're not able to reach agreement. We leave that, it's difficult for us to ask you guys to money here, because we really can't talk about trying to get back to case, you've been making that in the technical session. But I just want to assure you, I'm a trial attorney by trade. I would not be standing before you asking for this money by having a strong case. And we've gone a long way at this case, we have a trial date in April, I wanted to use the public, it's a scheduled trial date, it should go in that day, doesn't mean it's not trial, often get kicked out, but it's not going to affect the appropriation. Again, I'll give you the record, I would not be before you folks asking for money by having a strong case. Thank you.
Mr. Eo?
Yes, Jeff Eo, 427 Park Street. I was on the board, one of the members that had to go through the process and listen to the arguments pro and con on this issue. And I have to, you know, in agreement with the board right now, and Mr. O'Leary, that it wasn't taken lightly. We realized that this would be a long-term issue, and that there were issues that were occurring that PMA and Door, Woody are were not upfront with us about. So, we spent a lot of money, if I recall. The initial quote by the Door, Woody, I believe, from PMA, was like $88 million, and then it went up to $120,000 million. So, we had to consider that we were not getting all the necessary information, information that we need, okay, to make educated decisions on the building of this beautiful school. So, it wasn't taken lightly. I concur that we support this issue because we have the correct narrative made, and, uh... So, thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
I told you about the secondary civil liability committee. Secondary civil liability committee does not ask for a payment by the board, just whether or not you should have to. Some of the secondary civil liability committees have a meeting. But we want to be sure that this decision is isolated from a determination as to whether or not you should move forward and let the project trial. Can we get it? What does the Select Board make the decision? Secondary civil liability committee was not asking for a meeting. I'm going to take a vote, and if I just want to let her sort of, I'm getting sued, I'm going to have, and if you did it legitimately, I think it was a decision against it.
Good evening, Kerry Reddington, 16 Valley Road. Can you tell me what the town has claimed for damages in this complaint?
Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. O'Leary? I have to say that the loss is based upon the difference between what was originally appropriated, what we needed in order to complete the test. So if you do that, you have $1 million.
And do you anticipate that the town will continue to negotiate and try and settle this before trial?
Mr. O'Leary?
The town is willing to participate in any venue that the principles here are required to be. If trial mediation wasn't very fruitful, maybe with some rejudication coming out of the road, maybe facilitating some other, some other action. We're more than willing to participate in any of that without prior trial.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Sitting now, will pick who is the I.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Article 10, Swan. Thank you.
Article 10, to appropriate funds for survey, engineering design, and/or construction of a portion of Swan Pond Road. I move to appropriate a free cash to some of $175,000 to construct a new paved roadway to replace the 27-foot portion of the gravel area known as Swan Pond Road. Including the survey, engineering, and all other costs incidental and related to providing power for the no-fundation expense during it until the treasurer has received this or donation from the partners or others, and/or grants totally nullified $175,000 to supplement this appropriation. And further, that any funds provided as gifts or donations of the surface shall be placed in the FIP account to be used to adjudge with the pound's appropriation, and any related grants. And further, that any funds remaining in the FIP account with inclusion of the project, the treasurer shall return to the FIP any remaining funds, which shall be calculated based on the means of surrender of the funds extended in the area between the town's appropriation and gifts of the ownership, in amount of 400,000 shares of $175,000 contribution. All this is satisfied, Article 10, let's turn to the board.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McGrath?
Ed McGrath, 8 Laurel Road. I move to amend the main motion and pass over Article 10.
Okay, we have the main motion, and we have the amended subsidiary motion. So the motion on the floor right now, for discussion and debate, is to pass over Article 10. If that motion carries, we won't even discuss the main motion, because it will be passed over. Everybody bothering me? No, Mr. McGrath, the motion has passed over.
Mr. Moderator, Ed McGrath, 8 Laurel Road. The reason I made this motion is, I said this at the last town meeting, where we appropriated, I think, $10,000 to start. I think this is a rabbit hole right now. We don't know what, I expect that the town meeting would be asked to appropriate further funds in the future. And I don't think there's, can the town articulate what the policy is with these type of roads, and the other roads in town that are not paved, but have residents on them, residential homes on them? I think there's a lot of loose ends that need to be tied up, and I think the town needs time to develop the policy of what they're going to do going forward, and what it's going to cost the town as far as getting these roads paved and accepted, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think at this time, this is too soon, we should pass over. And my understanding is not all the residents on Swan Pond Road are in favor of this project. I just think, until some other issues get resolved, we should put this on hold until a future date.
Thank you. Seriously, any other additions? You want to go to the mic and call in? Right.
Philip Bravada, 223 Swan Pond Road. This article has been passed over three times already, and I think it's time, we deserve a vote. The residents are going to pay half the cost of this operation, and it's, it's hard at that. I mean, we couldn't possibly do this by ourselves. And the reason is, it started out as just a paving project, but now it's become a paving environmental protection project. The study came in at a cost of, I believe it was $201,000, and contingency money is $150,000 at this point in time. So there's enough contingency money that if something were to be required that wasn't expected, we would be prepared to handle that. But again, I just say that to pass over, I mean, it's happened three times, I say we put it to a vote, and then we'll iron it out and get it done. Thank you.
My motion has passed over, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Would you like to, this is in favor, the main motion for the board, would you like to move it forward? Discussion and action on the town, so we would urge you not to support the motion as over. And let it pass and go up right. Mr. Bravada, just point. Residents of this area, actually, 20 years ago, were, I think, getting the town to assist that in getting this road paved in a better condition than it is right now, to the rest of the town. We do not, the board, the select board, does not only have a policy for roads such as these, this one here, yet in relation to shared costs. We do have bylaws and amendment, by law, or except the streets, or the rail, or the 50% share opportunity with the residents of the town, town, and the residents of the street, 50%, that's already a clause, that's already been handled, and that needs to have a take place in the town already. This is kind of the unique case, because it's more a private property rather than a layup. We acknowledge that, and we understand. The board is in favor of approving the appropriation, but the board will not accept any money on it. That's what I'm telling you. When we get a policy, which is what it takes. So, I would urge you to vote no if the motion has passed over. Another slam, I don't know, I think we're going to make it under management. So we would urge you to vote no if the motion has passed over.
On the, for the board, I am a board, I live as a one. And it's not true that I don't have a case to Swan Pond Road, but I think any government, you know, consistency in policy. I think one of the complaints I get from residents in the select board is, why is this too competitive? We can take care of this, people not need to take care of it. And I think that's about the concern. I think we just, I want to help the folks on the pond, but I think our board needs to have a set policy for how we're going to handle these, to vote. Because there's 5.1 miles of dirt roads in the on-prey. If the town is interested in this, and if we may make a decision that the town do that, it's costly with 2.1 million, according to W. D. W. Director. So that's what we're buying into. We need to have a policy in place. Also, in my opinion, we shouldn't be at town meeting asking for money from the town until all the residents have signed off on the identity that go with paying the road. And also they give, you know, a token deposit, so we know in good faith, they want to vote. I took a ride up Swan Pond today, it's a very tough location in the sense that there are portions of the road that are really being wired with a car. And it's, it all, I don't know, there's an old path that's kind of turned into a road over the years, it's got a lot of turns. It's also right out of Swan Pond, which many people know is the water supply of the town dam. As such, if you're drinking water, there's a lot of stormwater work that has to be done, a lot of engineering. And I'm fine with that, but I think, I think that the town is doing things at our, kind of case-by-case basis is wrong, consistency of the residents. I think the board needs to articulate a detailed policy. I don't see why that can be done before next town meeting. Then, if the residents have a signed agreement amongst themselves, which they don't have right now, there's one resident who doesn't want the road, so it's going to be a situation where you're going to pay the road, you're going to have dirt, then you get out of what you're paying. I just don't think that makes sense to us as a town. But I think the more important, if you have a policy, the policy will obstruct anybody who's on their road what they need to do, and then I can't appropriate for that, and I don't have to vote for a town meeting. So for that reason, I would move to pass over. Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
Finances Committee took this up in our lobby and voted unanimously in opposition to the trial. We are in agree that, that we want to vote, pass over this time, 3, Mr. McGrath, and, and, Mr. O'Leary Schultz mentioned. This is a review. There is a degree in one of the residents, and what's going to happen, there's a couple of residents still holding out. There is no policy for how we treat unacceptable roads in the town, doing the one-off, sets person. I think it's going to be hard for us the next time, another group of residents that have an unimproved road that they're living on, wanting to something, and I have a look at it right now. And at the same time, we've got, this is a principle that this town, previous town meetings, the past several years, serious problems with the accepted roads in this town, that have been like, we appropriated a theron money last year, but it was a start on the program to the year of the accepted roads, but it's going to be many, many years before we raise the standard of these roads. I think we need to do something with the unaccepted roads in the town, but not on a one-by-one basis. We need to have a plan, have a policy, and fit that into capital plan for accepted roads as well. I would ever just all to pass it over to a region to have a sensible recommendation for town meeting. I don't think that would be great.
Mr. Bravada, you have a recommendation? Is it on the motion to pass over? On the motion to pass over?
I would just briefly, if you've been attending some of the recent town meetings, where there are residents on the location of the town's club, came out because of the pool and everything, because of the pool tables, how we need to pose. And I have a sense that people take time out of the world to try and make the town a better place. I'm very into the board, but I've been aware that last three years, the ones on the pond, asking for us to work with, we would, they, three times now in the town meeting, to present their case. But I want to emphasize that the $175,000 I was talking about is earmarked money. We would not send it until we had a policy in place to do it. So it's earmarked money, and we can just easily walk away from it as we can to spend it if the residents get themselves get it. So there's no obligation, and the future, is my understanding that you can do with this project, not interior of the future, road or projects, et cetera, we need to consider maybe work on it. The last time I was there, this is probably the biggest time that we did have a preparation of offices before, is that it's a seasonal cycle to get these projects on. And if you don't, if you don't, at least earmarked money for now, they're going to wait another two, three years before this project has a chance to get it done. So we're trying to give them an opportunity to get all the sentences, trying to give them an opportunity to raise the money. If it doesn't happen, and we don't have a policy that fits all the needs that we have, we have alternatives, then we just walk away and decide. It's really a risk, and it's a lot of dollars. Thank you.
Brief question for the town selectmen. Who's responsible for developing this plan? Who within the town or its agencies? And if this has been passed over three times, has a plan been started? Is there a plan under development?
Mr. Bravada?
There have been a number of discussions already with the residents that have come to visit us. I think informally, we understand the contingency.
I think informally, we understand the contingency that should go with. I think it's going to be the assignment of the board, I don't think I'm wrong, but it would be the assignment of the board to continue to work with these people to develop our plan. And that would be, at least in this particular business, a very unusual situation. Citizen petition. It is very unusual for you to step forward that you were going to have. And are the board coming made, but I tend to doubt it. And they were raised again to select this on, on the K drive. So I think this is a controlled, unique situation. I think what we will all have to do is to work with them again. There may be dissension in the rights, and may have come up to fruition. We're trying to give them a chance, trying to give them a chance out of that. And actually, the D W is one of the, some of these are maintaining paved roads, and it's maintaining, uh, there's actually a cost associated.
So if we did not pass over this article, it would be the town selectmen would ultimately be responsible for developing the plan that the funds, spending funds was contingent on?
Yes, yes. We would not have to spend money until we have a plan in place. That would be the reason. So that would be part of the result.
Thank you. Mr. Culler.
Three, we just wanted to add a question. So there's two components that are here. One is that they continue work, it goes into design, or way, at the end, it was seen by the D W America, town engineer, operation manager of the D W. The issue of the policy, I'm beginning to notice that it would require proof by the select board that they expect them to have any of all the D W.
Thank you. Sir, is the answer question, or?
Make a statement. I would just like to say that the residents of Swan Pond don't want to move forward without a policy also. And we were hoping to get this approved so then we could work out that policy during the winter, and when the construction season arrives, after waiting all this time, we could then proceed. Mr. Culler has been at probably all of our meetings, and has always gotten up and spoken against us for one reason or another, but really never offered any, anything constructive so that we could come up with a policy. In the beginning, you made your motive, ulterior motive clear, is that you wanted the money for your program. Well, this is something I, I guess I-
Oh, oh, oh. On a motion to pass over, let's not get into a duel between you and Mr. Culler.
Okay, well, I guess I spoke in my mind, and sorry if I offended anybody.
Thank you, sir. Terry.
Michael Hool, Ten Cogs, well wrote. I think I heard someone say they didn't see any reason why we couldn't have a policy in place by next town meeting. If this has been passed over at three town meetings, why isn't there a policy now? Is there a problem getting a policy done?
There's no there.
No, there is no problem getting a policy done. The reason that it hasn't been done today, again, this is somewhat of a unique situation in our community. So we need a town meeting. First time, a town meeting that we passed over. Last time, we needed to appropriate money, get an engineering, self, take a look, get the actual project. So until we found out the source of the project, we didn't have truly the idea as to what a policy should be like. Because we didn't, no, this is completely correct. So I think it's more of a, you know, we're still connected to the thinking of Swan Pond area every year. If I had to assist, if we get into this stage, we could approve the road. Because as you say, we can have, we already have a policy that accepts the streets that have a layup, where there's 50% share responsibility between the property owners of the town. But in those particular cases, we can get to spread it out over 20, 29 areas to a better process. This would be taken in case. So we need, is that if we were to park, or we're just available to people, then we're going to have to probably do 20 up front, 100%. Before the town is ready to have. That's going to be part of the policy. Time to have a policy, what does our commitment to see is we're not going to show the law. Because again, so we're going to have a talk. We're just going to write out another, to you, town meeting, talk to the three seasons in your eye about the rest of this situation. The board is comfortable with that. We believe we can develop a policy. In a situation such as this, it's a civic, it's one of the act. And then if we model the policy, will money be available to move forward with the project if the residents aren't there by the end of the program? If money ain't there, I don't know what I would do. Give us all the time, I would represent us, I need. So, except the, the structure purposes, but again, there's reasons for that. The reason was, we didn't know what town that we were looking at. Now that we have an idea, we have an engineer, says, tell us something, give it, budget, this is, maybe I did, whoever did. $12,000, how the workers recommended a closed budget, $50,000. Both of those things, and a few contingencies in there. Again, they have a receipt. Third, if we may, they have a project. So the 300,000 dollars, 200,000, 75,000. We'll look at the property, the town's portion now. What would they have policy, give it to the residents, have it, you know, what I am, you know, what I am, money gets returned free hash, but as a venture, they'll be there. And I could spend any money on the project, you can run away the project, until we get policy about, eh, offer to the residents, then we'll move forward. So, how are we going to be able to deal with this? Most of what we're getting right now, just sort of the question, there are two, three potential seasons. We don't think it's bad, we're ready to act, we're ready to take on, we're ready to move soon around, and so asking this board, we urge you not to have some of this talk.
Well, let me just, may I?
Question?
Yes, I guess I still don't understand why you needed the specifics of the Swan Pond case to come up with a policy. The policy is for all unpaved roads in the town. Why did you need to know about the Swan Pond?
Mr. Culler.
It is not for all the paved roads in town. Probably three quarters of the paved roads in town are on layup. It would be eligible for the government by law, the market after release, town meeting are approved. Is that the 20, 25% part, is it a little bit? Is it a minority, is it in relation to greater to provide to all of the rest? This one, you hear from the top, you get one of those, from the rest. All, oh, this is actually good one, for us to, oh, that are, a policy.
So are you saying this policy you're going to come up with is a policy for the Swan Pond Road, but not the rest of the town?
It will be situations like Swan Pond project, whatever the town. It will be one across the, it will be just a simple. But this is the, this is the, this is the, this is the benchmark to work from. We feel good about that.
Way to be recognized before you speak, both in the audience and up front, please.
I guess, it seems to me Steve is, is, uh, is contradicting himself. He says it's not for the whole town, and then he says it is for the whole town.
Mr. Culler.
All cities that we can help, and all of the rock by the board, select, will be, the priority. Will be, this is the evidence. These residents are able to citizens petition for three years. This is about the evidence for us to take a look at, look at. Up to this point, which is Mr. Culler. We have it, and we're willing to commit resources on accepted streets. Uh, because of those laws of layup. Was it a layup, we have a better process. These situations, you made a mature decision, I would address it. You need to be willing to assist, and then get through that, prefer the, you need to see the rest, and then progress. If it will be for the rest of those fortunate community that are in such a situation.
Mr. McGrath.
Ed McGrath, Eight Law Road, several points to what's been said in the last few minutes. Number one, the fact that the paving season is in the spring, the summer, and fall, that this is not necessarily be two to three years out. I think that's a scare tactic. Number two, it was earlier brought up, about $250,000 of illegal fees that could be spent elsewhere. I'm sure the FinCom would appreciate 175 grand going to the stabilization fund. And I still say, we don't have a policy. The comment's been made that we should put the money up, and we'll think of something afterwards. I think we should get our swans in a row before we appropriate any funds. Thank you.
Mr. Culler.
Mr. Culler.
This is with us, today, uh, this is not today, this is a congregation, a little residence, a private residence within here over the last three years, in relation to the town table, or paying dollars. You are, should be well aware of human processes. As well did all the different things that were to be, are missing out.
Mr. Moderator, can you respond to his comment? Quickly, quickly. I just think it's the fact that it's going to be two or three years before pavements laid at Swan Pond, I think is misleading, it's not totally accurate, and I just think it's erroneous. So I just, it could be done soon.
Thank you. Mr. York.
Dana Rowe, 12 Dogwood Lane. I'd just like to make a couple of points clear. Number one, the town has done studies, a number of studies. We actually have done work up on Swan Pond Road on that section. We have permits from the people up there. The town has taken down trees, they've removed stops. The town engineer did a study up there. One of the things was, and this was years ago, I don't know if it's still true, it's cheaper to take care of a paved road in the town than it is a dirt road. Therefore, in the long run, we're going to be saving the town money. We've tried in the past to do a number of dirt roads in the town. And we've always seemed to run up this thing about, we've got to do studies, we've got to do engineer, we've got to do all of these things. Yet, in the past, we have done some of the roads. And one of the roads we did up there was Adam Street. It was done. There wasn't all of this stuff going on. The big point here is, it's going to be cheaper for the taxpayers if we pave these roads. Because every year, the town has to go up there, they have to maintain the road, they have to plow it, they put down reprocessed stuff, it's pushed to the side, it's run off, there's mud holes, there's potholes, they have to send graders up there, they do this three or four times a year, and it's very costly in the town. Therefore, we should go forward and get this thing done.
Kathy Byth, 2 Brooks Road. My main concern right now is whether our first responders can respond to homes on that road. I know I live near Travelway, which was a private street, I'm not sure how that was taken care of, but having ridden my bike at the age of 10 and walked my children's baby carriages on it with all the potholes, I do appreciate my walks with the dog, and that's a street that I know can be safely traveled with, you know, the apparatus that our first responders are traveling. I do hope that this is done with all of the Swan Pond residents in a way that things need to be done, but I'm concerned about, you know, if society is being able to get to those homes to maybe to... Has that an issue?
It's an issue. This is a whole area. It's an issue over the years, which time has attempted to address it. We're going to get it out, particularly with fire, but over the years, we've been able to raid it a little bit by, there's a couple of turnarounds that have been made, which makes it a little bit easier for us to say we can access it. It's not as good as it was 30 years ago, but it's still a lot better. Right. So this is what it is.
Hi, Minusco Valdez, 28, Clint Street. I motion to move the question.
The most important question. All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. unanimous. Question for you is to pass over, so senior motion to pass over our ten. All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
No.
Chair is now. Would my telephone please step forward? All those favor, please raise your hands.
22.
Mr. Delaney.
54, 54.
Captain.
Yes, Mr. Swire, 30 now.
30.
All those opposed.
Mr. Delaney.
37.
Mr. Dara.
46, 46.
Motion favors, 15 yes, 152 no. Now, on the a motion, just to the word. I'm going to guess we only have a lot of behavior. Just to the word.
Thank you, Mr. Swire. Considerably, the recommendations we've given talked about, and I'll allow visibility to study. There are 19 parcels along the road to be paved, four of which are tunnel. There are four additional RPs, non-exclusive, to the road to be paving project. All the one RPs, meaning two parcels, have signed off on the paving of the RPs. The RPs are being asked to contribute 50% to the total project cost, which is projected to be $350,000. Your cooperation here, as I said, will be 175,000 dollars in all of this. And the neighborhood meeting is held until September 23rd, there's a select board discussion Monday night. It is interesting to show that a little bit of the limits of paving. You can see that it's numbers on the screen inside here. This is the Swan Pond Road coming in from the Dogwood area, slanting there with Adams Street and Swan Pond Road. Beginning paving here, through the parcels, all the way through to the death path, turnaround that was constructed by the DPW four years ago. There will be a park.
Just information, just a frequently asked question, some of which are out there with the city. There are 48, 6 miles of rattle roads in the already, 27 miles of which are private or home here on the layout of the land. 4.16 miles of the roads are unacceptable roads that do show up in the town and are accepted as toll roads by town meeting. If you have to pay the cost of paying all the rattle roads in town, it is $0.31 million. Roads will require continued maintenance. Typical road has 15 to 20 year lifespan. Based on the last three years, the effort costs to maintain all rattle roads in the already is $28,300 per year. The cost of maintaining Swan Pond Road itself is approximately $3,600 per year.
Further discussion.
Hi, everybody. I would just like to feel to be able to pay one who has been a donor of our road. I did for seven years until the subdivision came through. So I know what it's like to push the baby carriage and avoid potholes, with the dust to come into the house constantly in the summer. These people like commend them, they commend this neighborhood, they're like, together, for coming forward, for wanting to put up that money, to be willing to pay half, it's an improvement to the town. To get these dirt roads paved, it's better for everybody, in my opinion, to start getting rid of the little dirt roads, because the town has to take care of them. And I just commend this neighborhood, and I think that they should be given this opportunity. We're not going to spend money, they have to come up with that money, they have to sign on, do everything legally. There's a lot of contingency, but if they don't follow through, we don't spend money, we don't do it. They have to follow through in your heart, and I think that they should be given this opportunity to do that. Thanks.
Sir.
Dan Bolet, 14 Adams Street, which is just to the right of Swan Pond. So, there's a question here of these roads being not just paved or empty, but accepted and not accepted. So there's, when it comes to the part of having a consistent policy, it's very important. So there's some key legal questions far as, this being private property, is the town taking this over right away? Is this being maintained as an access even? And so whatever you actually do here on this project has ramifications for other residents on these sorts of roads. And I'm all for supporting the people on Swan Pond, because I'm concerned about Adams Street, because the paving here has deteriorated very quickly, and it's going to be very quickly in the same situation that Swan Pond is in. So, you know, my question is, or my, I would like to support the people on Swan Pond, but I believe, you know, like so many previous residents have said, having a consistent policy to, you know, address these things, both at the legal level and at the safety and stormwater prevention, you know, protection for the pond and drinking water source. A holistic approach really needs to be in place before you start pressing on helping out one street, leave that ramifications across a lot of different people in town. Thank you.
So maybe to the question in terms of the intention for this project, because of the fact there is not a layout at that site, meaning that there's no unacceptable road plan, there is right of way that's available to people to live in there, where it's to cross each other's arm to get it out. But because of the, there's only issues that it would create, there's only non-qualies that would create further, further of non-qualies, not able to accept the road, or to take the land and start another public way to get it done. It is not enough.
Sir.
So the intent would be then to hammer on all this in a policy? The elements figured out by how you incident, so for example, is the minimum standard going to be 12 foot road? An 18 foot road, or 24 foot road? Closed range, open squares? You know, there's a whole lot of stuff that goes into saying, why did the town accept the road? Or what standard of construction needs to be done in order to do that?
Mr. Delaney.
The intention is to make the existing layout largely committed areas, where you need the DA's site program, or if there is a layout that there is with community, I mean, does that look pretty in there? The stormwater plan that we have is designed by an engineering that would be put in, but there will be a lot of these charts to stay for, except for the city, we've got that charge.
Right, and I don't want to use the design, oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I don't want to get into the designing, because the dashboard having a policy in place sets the details for everyone to understand what that is. And then there's other things as far as cost share, is it equal cost share in buying the amount of footage, you know, that you have in front of you along the road? You know, some people on Adams Street have much more footage than I have. If I were to do that myself, it might be a small cost to me just to pave the road in front of me myself, and that should contribute to the greater progress. So that's where it consists of policy, so everyone knows the lyrics before you go into any of it. And then, you know, get that through a pack on improvement program. If it's the intent of the town, to actually incorporate this across all of the town, you set it up, you put it into a pack on improvement plan, and then anyone knows on the out years where exactly this stuff is going to be done. Thank you.
Marty Johnson, 9 Oscar's Way. I actually have three questions. Having been involved in a road project in another state, I know that bringing the equipment in and doing the work is cost effective to do the whole road. Why are we excluding four parcels at the end? Why, is there a problem there? I'd just like to have an idea of that. What are you going to do about those two parcels in the middle? Are you really going to stop the pavement and start it up again? And if so, I hope your policy is considering holding that person responsible for the maintenance of that. The town should have some leverage in that situation, if they're not going to participate, we should fund it. And the $3,360 a year, how do you expect that figure to change? And I'm actually, sorry, there is a fourth question. There's $2 million of roads to be paved. Is your policy that you say is going to be based on this particular project, are we then going to offer openly to the other roads the same opportunity? Which means you're going to come back to us for 1.15. I can repeat those in order.
Number three, it's basically the 50% savings is boxing.
Okay.
What was your fourth question?
Why are we not extending it to the entire road? There are four parcels at the end.
Mr. Delaney. As we understand it, the property owners toward the end are not able to sustain the road. So therefore, the limited practice would then exclude their, so they're not opening it up over again. They would have had their own obviously trap, okay, a portion between the area, but they didn't have that. What about the others? Mr. Delaney.
I would say that as far as the parcel that's in the middle that currently is still decided, that would be addressed on policy. So what other route, the only thing to, for a policy to support is starting. We'll determine that. And the next, just to provide, we'll determine. Just whatever other side of policy will allow that to happen. That would be addressed in the policy.
Okay. And the last question is, you've got $2.3 million worth of paving facing the town. Is this policy going to be, is your intention to open it up to all the other unmade ground?
For the vast majority of the unpaid streets, it's already a policy, and by the way, procedures in place. Over the 4.1 mile, already, already in place is the better. So those are the opportunities are already there. And we break it whatever number, it's a 50/50 share. Mostly getting a little better progress, so we can get creative, it's over 20 years now. So it's 0.7 tenths of a mile, that's 0.14 of the quarter paving, 20 years or something like that.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Lisa Mackey, 18 Adams Street. I just, we all pay taxes here, and it's for, you know, things like trash collection and for the schools, but also it's, would be nice if everyone had a paved road, so that they didn't have to deal with some of the issues. So I'd just like to point that out, that I think that this would be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Rosalie Cravada, 223 Swan Pond Road. I thank the select board for what you've said, you've explained everything very well. The only thing I would like to add is, Swan Pond Road, it's been over 20 years. We have requested this going back since 1998. We worked with previous DPW directors who kind of did an informal betterment, where they split 50/50 doing some of these paved roads. I have worked over all these years getting permissions signed from residents, you know, attending meetings. And it's only three years ago, when there was another turnover with DPW administration, that we had to again start from scratch again, we went to the board. So in these last three years, we've been going through this process of town meetings. You know, they did the engineering study. I feel like the town is saying, you know, we're willing to put forth this policy. For the time being, you know, Swan Pond can be used as the model. The money that would be set aside would come from free cash. And so if in the end it unraveled and it doesn't happen, the money just goes right back into free cash. But I do feel like we have been going through this process for a long time, and we were in the queue for some years, and through no fault of our own, just through, you know, change in administrations in town, we kept, you know, getting pushed to the side. So we just ask if you could please support this. It would obviously be good for us, but I think it would help the board as well, set a policy in place to deal with this townwide. Thank you.
Ed McGrath, 8 Laurel Road. Just a question on like a timeline. Is there a deadline for the residents of Swan Pond to come up with their share of the money? And is there a timeline to get this done? What's the schedule here?
Mr. Delaney.
Again, we are the experts, the next 18 months on the board, and there's a policy. What we're going to do is we're going to, appears to be a sensitivity here where, if we are in a situation, circumstances, that we require residents to come up with their motion to the funds, within a certain time, six months, nine months, whatever's going to be turned by the board at that particular time. If the money is not timed, then it won't have been by the time, and it would refer back to general, uh, for cash. So that would be part of the policy. As far as the timeline, the residents will have, and we'll let you take advantage.
Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator. I think like most people, I feel bad for people at Swan Pond, but I must say, seeing, listening to this about policy, individual policy, two or three months, two or three months, it all seems to be backwards to me. Do the policy, then come back before town meeting, and you have your policy, to ask for approval of this. This is just completely backwards. You don't use one street in order to form your policy. The policy should apply to all these unacceptable streets. It just seems to be backwards to me. It's unfortunate that Swan Pond people have come back for three years in a row, or three town meetings in a row, and the board doesn't have a policy yet. It makes, it's all backwards to me.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Delaney.
To keep it in perspective, Swan Pond Road, the unacceptable private streets represent less than 20%, 15 to 20% of the roads in the town. All of the rest of the unpaid roads, under existing policy and existing mind, do the other process. Only these small few number of streets, this is, what this will lead to, one of the largest streets, it needs to be addressed, because we don't see it as an imperative of, not having a specific policy here. Someone before the project, we will like to have a policy together, and activities, and what's, all of that. How about your, all of that, and then it will address, this particular people, residents, and any other residents of a private road, or what can call it, put up 50% of money on the park, before we spend it out. That's fine. So if it's not that mature, there isn't that much of a way of unacceptable streets that really looking towards, it's not very small.
Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator. All due respect, Mr. Delaney, to the board, you've had three years to come up with a policy. It doesn't matter whether it's a half mile, seven tenths of a mile, four miles, 20 miles. The policy should come first.
I guess I need clarification here. Of the 4.16 miles that we covered under the better, I don't believe in this policy on how we cycle the roads, how we fund those roads, how much we want to fund every year for those roads. So I think that needs to be in policy. I understand this policy says, which is bad, there's a cost sharing to the residents, but if every one of the 4.16 miles came in next year, and we had to put up $1 million to cover our half of the cost, we couldn't do it. It's this whole thing that popped back. I just think that's policy that isn't, uh, just the point. I've got to fix in, I have no projects, and volunteer in the town, as the rest of the committee. Our obligation is to make, this is a sound recommendation to town meeting, yes, we do. Nothing personal, and there are no projects, I have my own. Just to directly, um...
Mr. Moderator, just a little bit of information here. We have, you know, policies and biases placed right now, of vast majority of unpaid streets. And all the leaders that are sitting in the board, which have often had significant pull on. We usually leave the residents to the coaches before we do. We're not, we're not depending project, taking care of all the unpaid streets of the community, because we have 22 miles, subdivision road to the authority, that we need to maintain on a regular basis. It takes us to get a lot of money, you know, and do it well, and again, we need to let it out, so to have that. So we have to have a more, more reactionary, again, all these, I just have the word, Mr. Delaney, how much to you? How about the things in the room here? We didn't find the established policy, you know, that we already have, or go over to another, because it's the main interest. And the last one, they did probably, I don't know, I don't know, I guess they're not, I don't know. And we don't have any question. It's a slightly flawed road, it's just something that the last several years, that happened before us, probably had our attention. Someone that'll be in these situations, some minority that can't afford to tell, and need to be addressed, what is the worst, you're not allowed to do, making it, I mean, I don't necessarily, anyone that already, like, move forward, giving the argument, if you get it back, before I come up with a go ahead. That's basically the process.
Mr. Delaney. I'd like to move the question, please. Move to the question. Move to the question. Move to the question. All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Unanimous. All those favor, wow, I'm sorry. It's been a long time, Mr. Delaney. So, could I have a recommendation from the board of selection, please? Mr. Wong.
The board recommends, for the finding incident.
Mr. Calhoun.
The finding incident, you and I just recommended to Calhoun.
Really? I didn't think of that. Oh, I did think of that. All those favor and opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
Yeah, did it again. And a lot of people left, it's still the end of the term. If my telephone's moving, all those favor, please raise your hands. Mr. Delaney.
34.
Mr. McGrath.
26, 26.
Mr. Calhoun.
51.
51. All those opposed, please raise your hands. All votes, please raise your hands. Mr. Delaney.
Fifty-eight.
Mr. McGrath. Twenty-eight, two-eight.
Moderator, please.
Close. Forty-eight, one-half, ten, first hand vote, this is all. Yes, one-eleven. No, one-sixteen. Move to the table. Mr. Moderator.
Moderator, move for paper ballot.
If you, if more people leave, just a little procedure when you leave. There's not opportunity for like a little recap here, so if you leave, if you go to the leave, the board suggests that you just hold up. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Delaney. Standing in court, fully looking at the court, standing in court. You know, if the people who really stand in court, so we can get the same number, just for a few minutes, please. We, we're going to take a reading vote, and it's only by standing. That doesn't mean standing in the back, do you mean? You can take a seat by the door, there's 20 of them now. So if everyone will take a seat. All votes in favor, please stand. My tellers will leave town. Mr. Delaney.
Thirty-four.
Mr. McGrath. Twenty-seven, two-seven. Mr. Delaney. Mr. Wood. The front is being held by Mr. Delaney. Mr. Calhoun.
Eighty-five, moderator.
All, all, everybody, just sit down, please. All votes, please stand. Mr. Delaney.
One hundred.
Mr. McGrath. Mr. McGrath. Twenty-six, two-six. Mr. Calhoun.
Thirty-five.
Yes, one-sixteen, no, ninety, and twenty... Twenty-one people left the room. Most chance. Article eleven, Mr. Wong.
Moderator.
Yes, article eleven is about appropriating money for the younger generation.
Oh, but, Mr. Pro.
I move to reconsider article ten.
Okay. If you hope, yes, we reconsidered back on the floor, we don't want to do that. If you say no, it can come back on the floor and take for the rest of the night. Just like an article earlier tonight. All votes in favor of reconsideration, please say yes.
Yes.
You kidding me? Opposed?
No.
Would my tellers step forward? Would everyone please sit down? Would you please, if you are in favor of reconsideration, stand to be counted? Mr. Delaney.
Hundred.
Mr. Calhoun.
Six.
Mr. McGrath. Eight. All votes opposed, please stand.
Mr. Moderator. Point of order.
Well, let me finish this. Mr. Delaney.
Forty-five.
What?
Four-five.
Four-five, thank you. Mr. McGrath. Thirty-six, three-six. Mr. Calhoun.
Did you really make me vote now? Seven-three.
You're a liar, baby. Boy, the yes is really loud. A thirty-one to one-fifty-four empty right of hand. Okay, point one.
Sure, yeah, point of order, Allison Martin, five march's length. Could the moderator explain why you just voted twice the first time before the reconsideration? I just got, I'm confused as to why we voted, then people thought it was done, and just why we voted twice.
Because... Because we had one woman stand up and say, "I want a paper ballot." And someone else stood up and said, "I want a standing count before we go to paper ballot." There was a question about the count. I forget. I have eleven. Moving on. So this is the appropriating money for the younger generation center design. I'm going to pass over article eleven, it's printed in the warrant. Recommendation, the board, select one, Mr. Wong.
Recommended.
Finance committee, this is all of it. Further disaster, I'm going to pass over. Mr. Wong.
Just briefly, this isn't a indication of lack of support for the younger generation community center, or anything that poses that fragile, this is required, or help to set up money for that appropriation. And it took us a matter of time, we will soon be doing this, there's master, facility master plans going on as well. So we believe we're going to reach this amount of this time.
Further disaster. Seeing on all votes, please say aye.
Aye.
All. Unanimous. Unanimous again, axed. Step one. Article twelve, Mrs. Delaney.
Article twelve, higher land for Conford Street, water road, River Park intersection improvements. Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize this select board to acquire by purchase, gift, and an intometer otherwise upon such terms and conditions as the board shall deem appropriate. Permanent and temporary interests in lands adjacent or contiguous to the intersection of Conford Road, River Park, Water Road, sufficient to provide for construction, maintenance, and use of the public way, and related improvements, all as further specified in article twelve, as printed in the warrant.
The recommendation, the select board, Mrs. Delaney.
The select board recommends.
The finance committee.
Finance committee, one committees.
Discussion.
Briefly, Mr. Moderator, the purpose of this article is to acquire hand, and property has come forward, and businesses in that area have come forward to make improvements to that intersection in order to allow for pedestrian access across that intersection. Amazon, Teradyne, and other companies in River Park approached the planning and engineering department about adding that crosswalk so that employees could cross over that area. There was a traffic study and a design study also done by Teradyne, and the work today has all been paid for by River Park companies. Teradyne also is expecting that the construction will be paid for by some combination of River Park companies. So we will not cause the town money to construct, but once it's constructed, we will be responsible for its maintenance after construction. And that's a lie behind the location where the property is expected to be placed.
Further disaster. Seeing on all votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, out of thirteen. Mrs. Delaney, third.
Out of thirteen, acquisition and disposition, seventy Conford Street. Mr. Moderator, I move at the time vote to transfer from the tax title custodian, served property, held for tax title purposes, to this select board for the purpose of conveyance, being an approximately 1.85 acre parcel of land located at seventy Conford Street, and shown on assessors map nineteen lot six. And to authorize the select board to take such action, including execution of instruments as may be necessary or convenient, to carry out the vote taken here under all as further specified in article thirteen, as printed in the warrant.
For the select board, Mrs. Delaney, recommendation.
Select board recommends.
The finance committee, so.
Finance committee, one committees.
Discussion, Mrs. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, I have leave of the meeting for a presentation that will be no longer than ten minutes.
You have to leave the meeting for longer than ten minutes. They're going to go over to those five as they can, and it's to be safe. So they'll go over. All votes favor, allow me to leave the meeting for ten minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have ten minutes. Mr. Mrs. Delaney, Mr. Calhoun, Mr. Wood, Mr. Wood, second, third. Have had.
Mr. Moderator, this, this came out of the economic development committee's effort, so we ask Mr. Delaney to take it from here.
Mr. Moderator. Hello, everyone. So this team of like economic development committee has resulted in inquiries by two potential original buyers to deal property on Conford Street. It's a positive, occupies about 1.85 acres of land. It's on the southern side of Conford Street, and closed proximity, closed proximity to the river and the associated water. The property was owned to various industrial and industrial uses around this street. The property has developed a single-story industrial warehouse type building, constructed in 1966, which is currently vacant. Over the seventy, economic development committee had contracted engineer to review previous environmental assessments and remediation efforts on the property. The property's location of a short release of chlorated volatile organic compounds to site soil and groundwater. There various industrial tenants on the property caused several releases of oil into hazardous materials and substances, which has contributed to the flume of groundwater contamination associated with chlorinated solids. Property taxes is interest own to the town as of total thirty-two thousand and nineteen, principal two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. The interest, interest on that is five-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, forty-three cents. The state department has provided protection as a lien for one-point-nine million plus interest, but cost will be to remediation as of March two thousand and nineteen. The current set value of the property is five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, six-hundred dollars. The previous owner no longer exists. As I stated earlier, the private parties have contacted town express interest in acquiring the property. With the assistance of State Representative Brad Jones, the economic development committee met with officials at DEP to discuss options. One potential option is a revenue sharing, where DEP in the town will share in the proceeds of the sale. However, or higher, those prices will be. And this will be forces of amount that each entity owes for the taxes, town for the taxes and DEP for the remediation. State law provides protection to cities towns seeking to foster redevelopment of sites such as seventy Concord Street. These options are not available to private property owners. The select board, in consultation with the economic development committee, proposes that the trailer collector foreclose the property, taxing it to the town as a property, with the intention of selling the property to another private owner or developer. Under state law, an auction would be required for the town to sell the property. Select board and EDC have discussed desire to have more control over who buys the property. A more qualitative request of proposals process is being recommended. Town needing approval to transfer the property to the select board for disposition or sale is being requested. Under this process, the most advantageous proposals would be selected. The town would ask the land court to refocus closure, and property would then be sold to person or entity with the most advantageous proposal. If a seal fell through, town could ask the land court to vacate the foreclosure, essentially ending the town's ownership. Windproofness, opportunity to restore commercial industrial property, tax-paying status, opportunity to clean up a blighted corner on a busy road in and out of the property, opportunity to mitigate environmental issues.
Awesome, you didn't even hit five minutes. There's no agri though. And I'm not calling on your register to that. I heard the discussion. Mr. Delaney.
Thank you very much. And I apologize, I have a bunch of questions, and I know what's there, but I'm gonna ask questions, so.
Can I have them?
Forgive me. But I have a few concerns, and I tried to speed it up, I gave the board, uh, the select board a copy of my, my questions, so I don't know how to speed this up, but, uh, if a north wedding intends to take possession in order to sell the property, there must be an advertised RFP mentioned in there that, uh, there's a process that you're gonna have to go through. Our concern is that a quick flip of the property would be hinted by the newly acquired process of sale in the property. The lawyers will have to try and negotiate indemnification agreement with an ass DDP. Assistance by the US EPA in the cleanup may be necessary, and there are a lot of complex moving parts that will rack up a lot of billable hours. So, my questions are, I'll ask one, if you've had a chance to look at it, I'll ask one, and then they can answer, and if it's okay, I'll ask one.
As long as you wait your recognition before you ask the second one, and they wait your recognition before they answer, you gotta be up.
Okay, evaluation and remedial options for contaminants in the bedrock is very expensive, possibly costing in the millions. How will the town pay for the expense, and what is our monetary proposal?
Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Yul, for considering this, I have the same, very same concerns as you. The idea behind this article, the idea behind this acquisition, is to have a potential developer of the parcel come forward to cover those costs. These would be contingencies that would have to be worked out in agreements, not just between the town and the developer, but the developer and DEP. So those are the types of considerations that would be prepared to the most advantageous offer. Whoever comes forward and makes the best presentation of how they're gonna get this site cleaned up and back on the tax rolls, is the one that's going to probably win the bid in an RFP. So we wouldn't want to do anything that would cost the town any money in this process. So the idea being allowed to someone to come forward with an offer on cleanup and acquisition, and it would be the very cost to cover that, as well as cover some sort of repayment to clean to DEP. So all of those would be depend on what comes forward in an offer.
Mr. Delaney. Yes, what would happen if an owner feels we don't get satisfied, we, we purchased the property, it's now the offer to the town, and no one comes forward with the offer that assumes to cover the costs?
Mr. Delaney. All right, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Yul, as, as presented in the presentation, town could ask the land court to vacate the town's ownership of the property.
I'm sorry, repeat that, I'm sorry, I can't understand you.
As indicated in the presentation that I just gave a couple minutes ago, uh, the town could ask the land court to vacate the town's ownership in the property.
Okay, I didn't pick up on that.
Not other questions, Mr. Yul?
Yes, the historically communities maintain tax lien, but will never assume the environmental liability when taking actual possession of contaminated properties. Will the town take on the liability of this property, may generate.
Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Yul, I have the same exact concern, would we consider this as a coordinating? We heard from our attorney, attorney Blake, who is from KPR, our real estate attorney. We also heard from attorney Capola, who, as you may recall, these two individuals was also our tax title counsel. It has always been thought that once a town acquires under twenty-one E, and it becomes the owner of the parcel, that we would be the responsible party required to clean up. There was a change in that for this particular service, and it is indemnified. However, these are the types of things that must be ironed out in agreements, and that's why the idea is to take it to the point of judgment for tax taking. And that was discussed in the select board meeting, and that was the, um, recommendation to our tax title attorney, is to proceed to the point of taking the judgment, and let's iron out the details if someone comes forward, if a developer comes forward with an advantageous offer. So don't take it, or if we did take it, we could be, uh, uh, resent the taking in court if we did take it. We don't be responsible, and don't spend any funds to, um, clean it up. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Yul, she had your comment.
I know.
She know follow question.
Well, we sat next to each other for a few years, so, so we lumped off on each other.
If I have other questions?
Yeah, 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 um, the, uh, you had some numbers up there, I saw, I thought I saw a number of five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, I think that was the value of the property, is that, is that correct? Yeah, uh, yeah.
Your assessed value is?
Five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, okay, there it is, okay, uh, that's assessed value. What, have you done any, or looked at any, uh, market value on this property at all? Do you have an idea that it's gonna generate a million dollar sale, or what?
Mr. Delaney, I'm sure you had the same concern.
I'm gonna go ahead and take an educated guess, the market value for something that's probably gonna be the millions to clean up is negative. So, we need to put this out to bid, and see who can come up with some creative plan to correct our mental issues, and to get this back as a commercial parcel, and back on the tax rolls. Market value for something that's dirty is probably pretty low.
Mr. Yul.
Yes, so, the reason why I asked my question, I think this is a good idea, all right, and I wanted to just hold it clear that, uh, uh, there's a lot that goes in this, and a lot of effort to making sure that the, the, uh, uh, costs will be covered and settled. The idea is to get it back onto the tax roll, that's always a good idea, so, thank you, thank you.
Okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none of those papers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article fourteen, my favorite motion.
Article fourteen is amend the code zoning bylaws, Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article fourteen, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation of the board, Mr. Delaney.
Select board recommends.
The finance committee, so.
Finance committee recommends.
Discussion. Any none of those papers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, that is, this is not my favorite motion, my second favorite motion, this is my favorite motion. Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting, seeing a day.
Seeing a day.
And is it a dispute? Seeing a day.
We have a motion to adjourn. Discussion, seeing none of those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Take pride home.